Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our April 20th Board Meeting. Let me first apologize for our delay. We are running about 15 minutes behind, and so I apologize to all of those who have been waiting. We have all Board members present, as well as our Counsel, Mr. Bob Wilson, and Dr. Furman. So we will start our meeting at 6:43 April 20th. Call to order. And let's please take a moment of silence. Thank you. And for all those who are able, let's stand and please say the closing words.
Let's begin with the call to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just looking at the agenda from our last Board meeting, are there any revisions, corrections? That would be from the March 9th Board Meeting, and we had two board work sessions. All right? No revisions or approvals, okay? Yeah? And no changes to the minutes? All righty. So we will move to our spotlight. And Dr. Furman, would you like to get us started?
Yes. Yes. I want to interview Ms. Sanders from Oakhurst Elementary. She is going to be our spotlight for this evening. Get away, Ms. Sanders.
Hi, everyone. I'm really excited to share the equity work we've been doing this year at Oakhurst. The last couple of years, we've really worked on our staff and really done a lot of reflection and book studies and things of that nature. And this year, we've really worked a lot with our students, and so that's what you will see in the video.
Thank you. That was awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Sanders. I love how you put that together and that crew message that they say every day. I like that. That was very powerful and using her voice. So thank you for sharing that. Did you guys have any comments for me?
No.
Can you guys hear us now? Yes, now that I can hear.
You're here?
Yep. Here we go.
So sorry about that technical disconnection. We are back, and thank you again, Ms. Sanders. And that's where I'm worried. If anybody had anything to say to Ms. Sanders?
I was just gonna say-
Early enough, yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders, I just wanted to tell you how excited I was by the crew message of my voice has power. What an empowering message that must be for your students. I was really excited about your books and the topics of discussion. I'm currently taking a curriculum in social justice class and so scrutinizing the curriculum to equally lenses. That's what I was reading about today. So you guys are right on top of things, so thank you for all of your hard work.
Absolutely. All right, back to you, Dr. Furman. Oh, no, I'm sorry. It is time for public comment. Shana, how many commenters do we have this evening?
Tonight, we have four people speaking.
All right, great. So thank you so much for those who signed up for public comment. Just a reminder, when you first start, if you could please let us know who you are and your affiliation with City Schools of Decatur or the City of Decatur. We'd love that. Also, if there are any particular issues that are very personal, then we can definitely talk in another format. This format is not the one to use if you have an issue with a certain person or teacher or staff member, okay? So we will start with the first comment. Go ahead, Shana.
Okay. First person up will be Mr. Kunle Ogunai. Mr. Ogunai, please unmute, and you can speak now. Kunle?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, School Board. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kunle Ogunai. I'm a parent of a sixth grader and a ninth grader. I also represent Closed Activity Movement Group Decatur. I'm speaking to express my frustration at how we've handled the last few months regarding the placing the Superintendent on administrative leave. I have questioned whether we should reconsider our attorneys, Wilson Morton, and sorry, I forget the last name. But if they did not advise us to take action earlier, I did derelict in their duties. This just seemed to drag on and on for so long. Did they advise us when the first two lawsuits were brought? Prior to that, the personnel leaving the district, it just seems like there were so many issues that kept happening. And if our crisis management was at the top of its, if we were really active with regards to crisis management, we could have handled this much sooner and been further along than just now. So I'm expressing frustration on that, that we need to be more decisive as a board, as a community, and even attorneys are not advising us. If they're just letting us let things drag out, they are not doing us any service, and we should consider getting another set of attorneys. In addition, I do want to raise, and I've raised it via email, but I think it's important that we start thinking about career and technical education. We are entering a phase in the 21st century. New careers, new industries are emerging that do not require the typical four-year college degree path of the 20th century. It is very important that as a school district, we also begin to explore those opportunities, the film industry, the aviation industries, alternative energy technologies, industry, cybersecurity. There are so many industries that no longer require a traditional four-year college path for entry. What are we as a school district doing? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ogunai. Next person up will be Ms. Susan Camp. Ms. Camp? Ms. Camp?
I'm sorry, it said I was promoted to a panelist. That's new for me. I'm sorry. My name is Susan Camp, and I have two children enrolled at Claremont Elementary. I too share some of Kunle's concerns about who is representing our district. I also wish to use the public comment period to share that I commend the Board for unanimously voting to place Dr. Duty on administrative leave while the investigations of potential fraud are carried out. I also am very frustrated and disappointed that it required us launching multiple petitions and engaging with media in order for our Board to do the job in which they were elected to do. Now, I know that later on, you are going to be discussing the preliminary budget for the fiscal year '22, and I have serious concerns about eliminating pay increases for teachers. It's my understanding the current budget also still accounts for a 12% pay increase for Dr. Duty, as was negotiated in his contract last September. I'm also concerned about some of the high-salaried headcounts that are being added. There doesn't seem to be any meaningful effort to reduce expenditures while you are simultaneously proposing a millage rate increase. I also want to state for the public record that as long as this investigation is ongoing, I do not believe the Board should be entering into any contract renegotiations with Dr. Duty. I believe they should allow his contract to expire, and the 12% pay increase should be rolled back into the budget and reallocated to the teacher pay increases. Before you vote on the budget tonight, I strongly urge you to consider what your responsibility is in safeguarding the fiscal future of this district. I was disappointed to learn that the Board unanimously approved a $400,000 IT expense to upgrade active boards at Tally, and I mean, I'm sorry, at Fave and Renfro, when we are in a period where we need to be freezing as many expenses as possible right now. And I just, as a taxpayer and a parent, I find active boards to be pretty low on the list, especially when we are looking at a number of students remaining virtual for the next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up would be Addie Desing. I'm not finding Addie, so we're gonna move on to Jane Peavy.
All right, can you hear?
Yes, we can hear you. Jane?
My name is Jane Peavy. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak. I have a child in third grade at Tally. I'm also a teacher within the system, and I live within the city limits. My concern is that, looking at the budget, that, as Susan stated as well, one of my concerns is that you're looking at not having the step increase for teachers, and then also increasing the millage rate. And it just disappoints me that that is the consideration of looking at how to help with the budget versus looking at other ways to reduce expenditures. And my question, comment, concern, however you'd like to speak about it, is the step increase is given, my understanding is given from the state level? And so the step increase that is given at the state level, how does that affect within our budget within our district? Thank you.
Thank you. I've searched for Ms. Addie Desing, and I have not found her, so we can move on. That was the last, excuse me, that was the last speaker.
All right, thank you so much, Shana, and thank you for coming. And we will move to Superintendent comment, Dr. Furman.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here. I'm humbled by the opportunity that the Board has given me to serve as the interim superintendent for City Schools of Decatur. This past year has challenged our students, teachers, families, and communities, school system, beyond what we ever thought we had the capacity to endure. We navigated through a global pandemic, racial and political unrest, and significant cuts in state and federal funding for education in the face of significant COVID-related costs. I am grateful to have the chance to offer stability in this role for as long as I'm called upon to do so. I am committed to being a leader who puts the well-being of our students first. We are focused on a strong finish for this school year and ensuring we are 110% ready for the upcoming year. I appreciate this opportunity to introduce myself to anyone who I haven't met since I joined City Schools of Decatur in 2018. And to do this, I just want to highlight a few of, I will eventually highlight a few of our accomplishments as well as we get closer to, as I finish up my comments. So for those of you who don't know me, I grew up on a dairy farm north of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. My father immigrated to the United States in 1965 and met my mother at Northwestern University. I'm one of seven children, and I'll tell you, growing up on a farm and that is such a strong work ethic in me that still guides me to this day. I started my career in 2001, teaching seventh-grade social studies at Summer Hour Middle School. And then in 2005, still at Summer Hour, I was promoted to the role of Assistant Principal. In 2009, I had the opportunity to open a brand-new middle school in the northern part of Gwinnett County, which was called North Gwinnett Middle School. I also served there as an Assistant Principal. In 2014, I had the honor to be appointed as the Principal at Baker's Middle School in Grayson, Georgia, before joining City Schools of Decatur in 2018. Later this evening, you're gonna hear more from each division leader regarding their accomplishments this year. But first, I want to thank our principals, teachers, and staff for their endless dedication and hard work to create such high-quality learning environment, to foster meaningful connections with students during this time, for keeping equity in the forefront as countless decisions were being made. Thanks to all of our counselors for supporting our students, significant social and emotional needs, and we are grateful to our staff for their hard work for reinventing the roles as we went along. So also nutrition workers, they provided meals throughout the pandemic. Our bus drivers were delivering meals and books, working on modified routes. Operations staff implemented mitigation strategies, including upgrading our HVAC systems. Our custodians followed extensive protocols to keep our buildings safe and clean, and our IT department supported virtual learning by distributing Chromebooks and supporting thousands of families. We're also thankful for our financial department for achieving exemplary results on our annual independent financial audit and for demonstrating transparency and fiscal discipline while planning on a very challenging budget. Even as we're focused on closing out this school year successfully, we are working hard to set the stage for a successful start for the 2021-22 school year, including ensuring a robust summer intervention program is available for students. We are committed to providing students with five full days of in-person instruction next school year. Also, based on guidance from our current mitigation team, we plan to implement what people are calling the three Ws, wearing a mask, washing your hands, and waiting, which they call social, which is their word for social distancing. We will cohort as much as possible to make use and make use of rapid COVID testing. This week, I'm meeting with our mitigation team to finalize details for next year, and we'll share more details soon. I want to take a few seconds, or a few minutes, to talk more about our rigorous and engaging summer learning program. And that is our first layer for addressing any learning loss from the pandemic. Through engaging and interactive lessons, we are confident that students will make academic and emotional gains through this program. Key dates for our student roadmap to success are as follows. Phase one, which is now between the end of the school year, we're continuing to collect and analyze data to identify which students would benefit most from this program. Then, May through July, we will be having our summer learning opportunities and a ramp-up program. A Phase II-A, which is gonna be going on at the same time as the summer learning program, is going to be professional learning opportunities for staff. Then, starting August 3rd, that is our first day of school, and we will continue implementation of support for academic and social emotional learning. And we're also going to layer on top of that extended-day tutoring and enhanced intensive fall and winter spring break programs to support students throughout the school year. I'm excited to join hands with you and take the next step of this journey together.
Thank you so much, Dr. Furman. We appreciate you. So I just wanted to, for the chair comment, to thank you all again for attending tonight. Apologize again that we were behind. And I know that there is much uncertainty, lots of questions, and so I just want to acknowledge that what some of you are feeling and what you are concerned about, we hear you, we feel it, and we share some of the same concerns. I want to welcome Dr. Furman as our interim superintendent. As you know, we made the decision, the Board made the decision, at the advice of Counsel and after deliberation, to put Dr. Duty on administrative leave. And we had, we went to Dr. Furman, we all agreed that she would be the right one to step into this role, and so far, we are very happy with that decision. Her and her team have really stepped up. I have no doubt that they are on top of everything and have no intentions of letting balls drop. It has been actually quite nice to see some of the morale and just the working together that we've seen in the last couple of days to just try to get through a very tough time. I did want to just speak a little bit on the investigations because I believe there is somewhat of a misunderstanding. So there isn't a whole lot that I can go into, but I do want to give somewhat of a timeline here so that people can understand. First off, our district attorney is Wilson Morton Downe. They have represented us for years, and they are present at our meeting today. They are not, however, in charge of the investigation or leading the two pending lawsuits. They are not involved in those. Harbin Hartley and Hawkins are the ones that represent the two pending lawsuits. That's who represents those lawsuits. We do not have an update on those pending lawsuits at this time, but for those who'd like to know, Harbin Hartley and Hawkins are the ones that represent, that are handling those two lawsuits. Lastly, McGuire Woods is who the Board has hired. They are a third-party and independent counsel that we did not have a prior relationship with. Once we all decided that we did need our own counsel to represent the issues that we felt were important to the Board and for our community, we hired McGuire and Woods after about a month-long of interviews with different attorneys. The investigation started, then there was spring break, and after spring break, at the advice of Counsel, and again, the Board discussing, we decided to put Dr. Duty on administrative leave. That is the timeline of how things have happened. We cannot, however, answer how long it will take. We cannot answer any personal questions, and it's not that we do not want to be transparent. It's not that we want to keep things from our community or lie to our community. I hope that you hear that from the bottom of my heart. We, at all times, especially when dealing with legal issues, go to Counsel for our advice. That is where we go, because we know that this is very complicated, very convoluted, and we want to make sure that any decision that we make, we know will affect our district, our children, potentially for years to come. And so at the advice of Counsel is how we step into all of these legal issues to make sure that we are doing the best to look out for our students. And so I hope that you understand that. I hope that you hear that. I wish that I could give you more. I wish I could tell you everything that you want to know. So please just trust that we absolutely have your kids' best interests at heart and at the core of every conversation that we have as a Board, that that is our center focus. And at this time, we hope that we can continue to focus on the work of our students, to focus on what we'll be doing this summer, to focus on how we can get the students back in five days a week, full-time, because we know those are the issues that affect each of us in our homes, and that is our goal moving forward. But as I've stated in my emails to many of you, if you would like to discuss further, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us, and I will gladly have a conversation with you all if you'd like to discuss anything further. Thank you so much. That's our comments, and now we're going to move to consent items. For consent items, we have personnel reports, school nutrition, financial report, and the Young Economics Summit. Do we need to pull any of those out for discussion? Okay. And do we have a motion to approve consent items?
A motion to approve consent items.
Okay. Thank you. Consent items, so now we will move to the items for action, information, and discussion. And the first item up is an update on the school district operation. Dr. Furman?
Yes, I am really excited to share this information, and I'm not gonna do a lot of talking, and as you mentioned, Tasha, we have such an amazing team of leaders around the table. So I felt it was appropriate here to give the cabinet members the opportunity to share and brag on themselves a little bit. So each of them has put together a couple highlights of things they've accomplished this school year that I think are really notable, just in a regular school year, but getting all these things done in a year of a pandemic is just phenomenal. So I want to give my cabinet members just a little bit of time to shout out themselves and give themselves a pat on the back, which is well-deserved. They're an amazing team, and I'll just share, I've never worked with a finer group of leaders, so I'm just so happy to be on a team with them. So I am going to start the presentation, and we are gonna start with Ms. Furman.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Furman, and the Board, and the community. I just want to say that my department, we are so proud in the way that we have been able to adjust, adapt, alter, modify, revise, conform, you name it, our programs, which are pretty complicated. As you know, everything that is state and federal is complicated and governed by a lot of rules and regulations. and governed by a lot of rules and regulations. But we have done all of those things to stay aligned with the federal and state guidance for implementing the services for eligible students that we serve in Title I, well, Title programs, ESOL, and special education programs throughout this pandemic. Never once did we stop. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sorry, I was getting some feedback. Never once did we stop providing services to students in any of these programs. And all together with all the programs represented, we have held 15 parent and family engagement meetings, all virtually during this time. So a little bit more into the specifics in our ESOL and title, on our ESOL and title side, we were able to start an ESOL and title parent advisory council, and that council has met quarterly, and it has five parent representatives on it. We've also been able to start an ESOL and title programs community collaborative, and that has representation from nine community partners, and it meets monthly. We've been able to start an ESOL and title programs after-school tutorial tutoring program that will run for eight weeks. And then for special education, we have been able to provide services both in the virtual and in-person environment. And as you guys know, special education comes along with a lot of paperwork. And every student in special education has to have an IEP, which requires an annual IEP meeting. So we did all of those meetings as we are required to do and some amendments to go along there. But in addition, each family received a virtual learning contingency plan meeting. And in that meeting, it was outlined how their child's IEP services would be provided in the different instructional delivery models that we have been adjusting to. And so literally, that doubled the number of meetings that we had to hold, which took us over 1,000 meetings with families to make sure that they were informed and included in the decision-making process. And 1,000 meetings includes a lot of people from my department and from our schools meeting for many hours, as you can imagine. We also brought back, as you know, our most vulnerable students with IEPs to in-person instruction in October. And so therapists, teachers, and our support staff have been working in our buildings ever since. And even during a time when we were experiencing a lot of uncertainty regarding the pandemic and before vaccines were available. So that is something that, you know, I will always hold our teachers in the highest regard for doing, you know, for doing that for our students that really, really needed to be in person. And then last, but not least, but back in January, we received our LEA determinations for FY '21, which are based on last year's data. And the results indicate that last year, we did meet our state target of 100% compliance on indicators 11 and 12, which are our child fine or initial evaluation for special education numbers. So we know that the school year did end a little early, but even so, we met at 100%. And had the school year ended in May, we would have also met the target based on our data. So I am so proud of my department. I'm so proud of everyone that we collaborate with across, you know, all departments to make this possible. And thank you for the opportunity to share this with you tonight.
Thank you, Frances. All right, next up, Sergio. Share with us all your operations work that you've been hard at work with.
Thank you, Dr. Furman. I'm going to give out some highlights of every one of our departments. The facility department has been working on the air duct cleaning project. This is going to be upgrading and treating the air ducts clean, system with a microengine. It's going to help with the indoor air quality. We are working on solar plants for adding solar panels over Talley and Renfro Middle School. Also, we are exploring options, so install electrical vehicle charging stations in at least a couple locations just to start with. We are working on the outdoor lighting project with Georgia Power. This is basically providing more, more safe to our schools where some locations are kind of dark at night. We are also working in providing additional playground equipment. This is mostly for Faith Academy and Talley Upper Elementary. The nutrition department, during the school year 2020, 2021, they receive 100% free and reduced reimbursements. This is an increase from last year from $28,654 to $156,287. This is about, an increase of about 82%. So it's impressive how basically we are recovering from the pandemic. In the safety and security projects, we are, we are working on updating the emergency response procedures manual. This is a very important task, and Matthew Damico is working on this. This does with the principals and cabinet members, so this is a great, great improvement. We also are working on installing new school signs inside the schools. This is more directional, but also for safety. This is a project we are going to take every school, and they're going to have a very new signs in the doors, but also directional, as I say. We are also working in upgrading the two-way UHF radios. This is for all districts. We are looking into a digital radios to provide encrypted communication just for safety inside the same schools, but also for the superintendent to communicate in case of an emergency. So one communication will be, will be immediately for everyone. The transportation department, we are, in-person learning is going successful. We are offering transportation for high school and middle school, kind of express runs. And we are working on implementing a new routing system. It's called Bus Planet, and a student tracking system called Here Comes the Bus. This program is going to be probably working together with how we're going to serve meals and technology with some other different things. We'll see is important improvement on this, this system. Also.
Oh, go ahead.
So just to the end. So the operation division worked behind the scenes during the pandemic, and these staff work every day, providing healthy meals, reliable transportation, safety and security, renovating and well-maintained buildings without excuse, showing commitment, dedication, and honor to. To these unsung heroes, I want to thank you for your hard work. I see you, I hear you, and I value you.
Thank you, Sergio. All right, Dr. Beam?
Hi, good evening, everybody. So teaching and learning, of course, is the core business of the school system. And in the curriculum and instruction department, I have the great honor of leading a small but brilliant team of educators who work tirelessly to support our teachers and our students by providing effective, standards-based materials that reflect our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We provide high-quality teacher training, and we support data-driven programs for our students. So there's a few areas that we, we've been a little busy this year, as you can imagine. And there's a few areas that I wanted to highlight that I'm especially proud of that we have worked in. And that one of that, one of those areas is collaboration, and that's collaboration with our schools, but also with our other departments across the Wilson Center. Of course, we worked with our information services department, as well as all the other departments this summer, to plan for virtual learning. We created the virtual learning plans, the guidelines, the trainings, and resources for our teachers. We partnered with other departments to streamline our district resources and research and recommend a simplified assessment plan, as well as a K-12 district-wide personal learn, personalized learning path for all of our students. Throughout district, through district-wide collaboration, we've also facilitated the creation of common pacing guides that have provided coherence among our grade levels and content area teachers. We have increased our collaboration with equity and student support with initiatives in culturally responsive teaching, decolonizing our curriculum, and vetting social studies materials. We've also worked with equity and student support and state and federal programs to successfully launch participation in the Georgia Dyslexia Pilot. Within our content areas, a few of our accomplishments this year have been that we have completed a K-5 ELA curriculum adoption for the district, and that announcement will be made at the end of the week. So we are super excited about that. We have been conducting biweekly, comprehensive K-2 para-professional foundational reading training, foundational reading training series by our district reading coaches. We've successfully launched a reboot of a district-wide foundations program, which is an OG-based phonics curriculum in grades K through three. And we have a cohort of teachers and district leaders that are participating in the letters training program. It's based, it's a two-year program based on the science of reading, and we will have that cohort continuing next year. In math, we've launched, launched a district math team. The team is in the progress of developing program evaluation for mathematics and creating a district math action plan. In the arts, we began a district-wide grades three through eight orchestra program that will be expanding into the high school next year. And then in our interventions and support programs, we have implemented READ 180, which is a reading support program, and we have seen tremendous reading growth with our students at Renfro Middle School. With, and we have been honored to support Dr. Bolton and Ms. Crockett in their work with that. We have shown growth as a district in 24 indicators for academics and 21 indicators for behavior on the Georgia Department of Education MTSS Fidelity of Implementation rubric. All of our K-5 EIP teachers have received training on the Georgia Numeracy Project and will begin implementation in fall of 2021. And we continue to close the excellence gap in gifted and talented programs, and we are working to reboot the critical and creative thinking lessons for all of our students in K-2 next year. So in addition to all of this work that we are continuing to do on a daily basis, my department is also engaged in a couple of other big lists right now, which include planning all of our summer intervention programs and determining what the future of virtual learning will look like in city schools of Decatur. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy. That was wonderful update. Ms. Walker and Ms. Fowler, staff support.
Good evening to the board and to Dr. Furman. We in staff support, like many other departments within the district, has had to adapt and overcome many obstacles and hurdles during this pandemic. And during this time, we were able to support our staff throughout the district as we managed an overwhelming amount of ADA and non-ADA accommodation requests during the virtual and in-virtual learning environments, as well as during that time, we created a CSD leave policy that extended beyond the, the December 31st, 2020 expiration date of the Family First Corona Response, Coronavirus Response Act. So that is something that we wanted to do to just support our staff if they were exposed to COVID in any situation, as well as being on top of everything and supporting the normal needs of the district. We were proud to successfully host our first virtual teacher job fair and substitute job fair as well, to fill the vacancies, the normal vacancies that we do have in the district and new positions for the 2021-22 school year. During that, during that job fair, we had over 100 applicants to attend and to be interviewed by our principals, school administrators, and department leaders. After the event, we actually sent out a feedback survey to our attendees, our applicants, and to the interviewers just to get valuable feedback, because this was our first time of any successes and opportunities for improvement and overall experience. During the feed, from the feedback of the surveys from our applicants, many of them said that their experience in the virtual job fair was we were organized and informative and positive. So that is something that I just applaud our principals and our department leaders in helping us make that event successful, including the staff support team of the hours of the prep hours to get us through that event. And then just ending up with our onboarding new employees and just overcoming obstacles as our normal way of onboarding employees. Usually, everything is in person, so just making sure that our, we are adhering to social distancing guidelines and then going forward with our virtual orientations, safe fingerprinting guidelines, electronic new hire paperwork. And then we use this method, as well as onboarding many of our PA facilitators that we had to support our schools in doing so, our supply teachers and parents. So I just applaud my team, and I'm just so proud of them and just being the leader of this small team. But we try to get as much done as possible and support our staff and our district as well as we can.
Thank you, Edina. That's runner for work. Ms. Fowler, are you there?
Yes. Good afternoon or good evening, board members and Dr. Furman. I just wanted to piggyback off of what Dr. Beam said in terms of the key thing is collaboration and working with all our other departments within Wilson and also partnering with our school leaders. We started off the year with our very first virtual orientation, actually. And so we tried our very best to make sure that that virtual presentation really reflected the, the culture and climate of our district. We had lots of synchronous and asynchronous presentations from, as I said, all our schools, as well as our district leaders in terms of just trying to give our new staff an idea of what we are about as a district. I work regularly with staff support and also lots of time with curriculum instruction. So one of the things that we did is we increased our endorsement offerings this year. We normally always offer the gifted, but in addition to the gifted endorsement, working to coordinate professional learning, we also offered the online teaching endorsement, the ESOL endorsement, the SST endorsement, and the K-5 mathematics. Again, working with curriculum instruction, we took some time to review our offerings and to see what we wanted to push forward for next year. We spent a lot of time working with staff support and helping to support substitute management. There are a lot of substitutes that we had to retrain. We retrained in Google Classroom over 100 staff members, including our substitute teachers. We also had some student teachers in there as well that needed an orientation in Google Classroom to be successful in the virtual environment. We expanded our university partnerships. Last year, we had about five different colleges. We expanded to 14 this year. We also increased the number of pre-service teachers we worked with. And so that number is at 35. We had 18 last year. And I just wanted to really give a shout out to our classroom teachers who, in the middle of this pandemic, welcomed pre-service teachers into their classroom. And I feel that really shows that they have a heart for mentoring and for nurturing our teacher, our new teachers. And last but not least, we also are in the middle of rolling out the professional learning platform. It will be aligned with our other offerings from frontline so that basically when staff would go in, it would be on the same sign-in. Right now, it's, as I said, it's, it's at the early stages. We are training district departments, but it will be a really effective change, I think, to have all of our professional learning efforts in one platform. And this allows us to not just increase the quality of professional learning, but to make sure that we honor the voice and choice of our staff and to make sure that everyone has access by creating a catalog and a catalog to make sure that we are sharing all our professional learning offerings. And we also feel this will definitely support our teacher leadership efforts as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Heidi, can you share with us what you've been busy with for research and analytics?
Good evening, Dr. Furman and board members. So as Dr. Beam had mentioned. Beam had mentioned, closely with research, curriculum and instruction to develop a virtual assessment plan and really ensure that teachers have the tools to use virtually. We started using Keenville, figuring out how and which tools could be used online. We also used this opportunity to rethink, study all of our existing assessment tools and conduct a thorough assessment audit, so that we are now ready to streamline our assessment plan and proceed in the most efficient way to get the data that teachers really need to have. It really helped us to be forced to put a bunch of things on hold and really think about them and realize what we were missing. Also did a lot of work this year on creating tools for improved use. We did an equity dashboard that we collaborated with community relations and also the equity team with. Also created a lot of tools for, as Dr. Beam's brilliant team moved forward, they, they needed data, they needed longitudinal data, so we made a map dashboard and created some ways for them to look at longitudinal Also, this year, we conducted an annual data update. It's been something we had been intending to do for a long time, and we actually accomplished it, collaborated again with communications and information services. And now nearly everyone has a federal account, and we moved all of those forms and sign offs that were all paper to a fully electronic system. I also learned a lot of new skills this year in problem solving, the student information system. We built survey and collected data and built dashboards so that school leaders could look at their data and plan as we kept changing things and had different numbers of students coming back. Learned how to make video tutorials so that parents would know how to fill out all those surveys. A lot of tweaking to the student information system. You may not know this, but every time you adjust the schedule, the calendar has to be adjusted, figure out how to take attendance. Every time you switch things up, there are a lot of new tools to try to keep track of our virtual learners and blended learning groups. And so there was a lot of learning around that. Also trying to figure out how to continue all of the other, the state reporting across each transition and making sure that we were doing everything that we needed to be doing and changing as the, the state and the world kept offering us changes. And I have so much gratitude, particularly to the attendance teams at the high school and the middle school. We have had to figure out how to attend no less than six different times in six different ways. Also a huge shout out to Anthony Colbert, who worked all weekend, all night, whenever we had to make a change immediately and get it really quickly. And all of that, also just jumping in and helping out wherever there was help needed during the pandemic, working with the subs, with C Learning, I instituted in a few classes and just really happy to be part of the team and proud of everything we've been able to accomplish, keeping the boat afloat and getting a lot of new things done as well.
Thank you, Heidi. Lanita, you want to jump in for finance?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I am extremely proud to be part of the finance team. We received a great audit for fiscal year twenty twenty without any finance. We saved the district over one point six million by refinancing the two thousand and ten series bonds. The finance team also worked throughout the pandemic to make sure that all staff members received their paychecks. And we created a link on the district website to allow stakeholders to have access to the latest budget presentation and allow them to provide comments and suggestions to the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, Anita. Lilly, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Furman, Board Chair White and board members for the opportunity to showcase some of the work of the Equity and Student Support Department. We've implemented and sustained a number of initiatives across all the program areas within the Equity and Student Support Department, but tonight I wanted to highlight the work of the School Health Team. Our lead nurse, school nurses and school health aide have demonstrated stellar leadership and flexibility throughout the time we've been navigating this global pandemic. In a very short period of time, they were trained and certified to administer COVID-19 vaccines. They volunteered to participate in two vaccination drives so far. Esten Melton coordinated our first vaccination drive through a partnership with the DeKalb County Board of Health, and we also partnered to support a vaccination drive sponsored by DeKalb Pediatrics and supported by the Decatur High School P T A. Through the combination of those efforts, we vaccinated a little over five hundred staff members, students and C S D community members. Tomorrow, many of our staff will be receiving their second dose, and they've been encouraged by DeKalb Pediatrics to bring an unvaccinated friend for their first dose of the vaccine. I'm so grateful for the flexibility of our principals who've helped to facilitate our nurses' participation as well as making it possible for our staff members to attend the vaccination drive during the school day. This week, our School Health Team also rolled out Binax Now rapid antigen test in our clinics. And there were many steps to get us to this point, including obtaining a clinical lab designation and waiver, developing protocols and completing training. And we wouldn't be at this point without the tireless efforts of the testing committee, including Nurses Shonda Moore, Dawn Durham, Elizabeth Barrington, and the Wilson Center team members, Heidi Watley, Anthony Colbert and Courtney Burnett. I'm excited to offer this tool to assist us with mitigating the spread of the virus, and we're exploring additional ways to potentially expand the use of testing going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haddleton. Courtney, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got them.
Good evening, everyone. I want to highlight three things that staff and the Communications and Enrollment Department worked on that I'm particularly proud of. I'm proud of all of our team's accomplishments this year, but I picked these because of the collaboration and because it gives me the opportunity to highlight staff members that have been working extremely hard. First, I want to highlight the work of our new equity website. We've talked for a while about having a central place to share all of our equity work. I'm proud of the collaboration with Dr. Banks and Equity and Student Support to create the website to highlight our work and the collaboration with Heidi Watley and Research and Analytics to create the equity dashboard. Next, as Heidi mentioned, we've had a long time goal of doing away with all the paper household data updates at the beginning of the school year. I'm proud of the collaboration with Esten and Information Services and Heidi to get our annual data update through Infinite Campus up and running this year. This data is extremely important to our communication efforts, and without accurate data, we can't communicate. And finally, I'm very proud of the employees in our department that made the pivot from in-person to virtual registration. Like so many things during the pandemic, we had to rethink how to manage all the components of registration virtually while ensuring that we were thoroughly examining residency documentation. This was not an easy change, but these employees made this shift with such grace and with an exceptional customer service mindset. So far, since March fifteenth, when we opened registration for the twenty one, twenty two school year, we've already registered about a hundred and fifteen new to district students for next year out of the approximately three hundred we expect to enroll. I also want to thank colleagues Heidi Watley and Anthony Colbert for providing amazing support to our staff during doing this work. I'm so proud to lead this small but mighty team, and I truly enjoy the collaboration with all my colleagues here tonight. Thank you so much.
Courtney, all right. Esten Melton, you're up.
Yep. You can read a list of projects that we have recently concluded or are very nearly concluding, or go play the video later. But what I want to spotlight tonight is, or are rather, my teammates, my colleagues. Ramus Fields at College Heights, Demetrius Towns at Clermonts in West Chester, Stephen Moore at Oakhurst, Mike Reynolds at Glenwood and Winona Park, Marcus Ray at Fifth Avenue, Derek Burgess at Tally Street, Chris Leonard at Renfro and Vu Nguyen at Decatur High School along with Kid Lee, Jason Wade, Lisa Jones and Harold Rall here in the Wilson Town. They're responsible for a ton of stuff. They're responsible for the incomplete list in front of you. They're responsible for us having a ninety seven point five percent five star customer satisfaction rating from our staff over the last year, which has been, to say, a trying year. So they're phenomenal, and I couldn't ask for a better staff.
Thanks, Esten. Also, Office of Superintendent, we, hopefully most people know, we completed our district accreditation and had a really great review. We are still looking forward to receiving our final report from Cognia, and hopefully that will come shortly, so that we can use that, their findings and any recommendations on how we can further improve our district for continuous growth and improvement. Over the summer last year, we updated the complete overhaul of our student code of conduct and restorative practices. And specifically, we added Rule thirteen, which directly addresses hate speech and use of hate speech in our schools. And we also included in our code of conduct clear expectations for staff and students regarding the acknowledgement of racism and having a commitment to work towards eliminating racism. And then even though we started virtual and we are now bringing students back in person, we did launch P B I S district live this year. Our schools over the summer worked really well to get their P B I S niches up and ready, but then when we realized we were coming back virtually, they added virtual learning agreements and just had a seamless launch, and we look forward to continuing with P B I S next year. So I just want to reiterate again, this is such an amazing group of leaders that I work with, and in addition to these leaders, our school principals daily are in the trenches and doing the work and supporting our students. And because of this amazing team at the district office level, our principals are able to focus on teaching and learning in their school building and not be overburdened with all of these other things to get in their way of doing their jobs at their local schools. And then we are ready now for the financial audit. Doug, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening to everyone.
How are you feeling?
A whole lot better now. Thanks for asking. Let me share my screen here. Here we go. All right, so I promise I'll be very brief, but thanks for having me here virtually to present the audit results for the district's June thirty, twenty twenty financial statements. Hopefully you've had a chance to kind of look over the statements, the PowerPoint presentation, what have you. If you have any questions, we can address them at the end of the presentation. All right, so just a quick update about Mollard and Jenkins. We actually added our ninth office last year in Sarasota, Florida. And so now we have, of course, four in Georgia, one in Alabama, one in Tennessee, one in South Carolina as well. Our governmental practice continues to be one of the largest niches in the firm, representing about twenty eight percent of the firm's practice. We audit over five hundred total governments in the Southeast, and that includes about sixty two school systems and about forty charter schools. As far as the engagement team, again, I was responsible for the overall audit engagement with twenty one years of experience. This year, we had Meredith Lipson to do the quality assurance review. She has over thirty one years of experience. And then Mallory was the engagement in charge with three years of experience. And then down below, just some other industries that we serve and other services that we provide, we do now have a different advisory practice that's led by David Robertson, so we're, we're lucky to have him. He's coming from K P M G with over twenty plus years of experience across the nation. As far as the financial statements, the financial statements are the responsibility of the board of management. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on those financial statements, and we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what you will hope to get from the external and independent audit. The audit report date was as of February twenty third, twenty twenty one, so we're a little late, but we'll talk about that a little later in the presentation. We also issued a unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on your major federal war program. You're required to have a single audit on your child nutrition cluster in accordance with the uniform guidance, and that audit report date was as of February, February twenty third as well. And then we also conducted the S P L O S performance audit as well, and no issues noted with those procedures on the S P L O S program. Moving right along, as far as our relationship with management, we received full cooperation from the school systems, management staff and others. There were no disagreements with management on accounting issues or financial reporting matters. As far as audit adjustments, anything that came to our attention, those adjustments were made to your trial balance reports and ultimately in your financial statements as well as in your general ledgers. Main thing here I want to point out is that we are independent of the school system and its financial reporting process in accordance with A I C P A professional standards. There were no fees paid to Mollard and Jenkins for any type of management advisory services that would have impacted our independence as your external and independent audit. All right, the next few slides kind of go with some financial trends. This first one is looking at your governmental activities, and again, this is all of your governmental funds on a full accrual basis, meaning that you have your capital assets and long-term debt, deferred inflows and outflows pertaining to your O P E B and pension plans all reflected in these governmental activities. And this is looking at your net position and your change in that position over the last several years. Your net position did decrease by roughly five point four million dollars, going from seventy five point eight million in twenty nineteen down to seventy point four million in twenty twenty. Of course, you see in twenty eighteen, a huge decrease in your net position. Again, if you recall from previous presentations that I've done for you all, that's pertaining to your implementation of G A S B seventy five, recognizing your proportionate share of the other post employment benefits plan, the D C H plan, health insurance plan. So that's, that explains that large decrease in your net position in twenty eighteen, which all local governments, state governments, federal governments had to recognize that liability in school districts. The next slide looks at your fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures, and you see how it has trended over the last several years. Of course, when you look at all of your governmental funds in twenty sixteen, you know, you had a high percentage, and that's due to that S P L O S program. And then as you started spinning down your S P L O S proceeds, that percentage came down when you look at all of your governmental funds as a whole. But looking at your general fund, that percentage is pretty consistent, went from twenty six percent in twenty nineteen down to roughly twenty two percent in twenty twenty. And then when you look at all of your governmental funds combined, it was pretty flat, twenty seven percent in twenty nineteen compared to twenty eight percent in twenty twenty. Next slide is looking at your fund balance for your general fund and then your other governmental funds, which includes special revenue funds, your capital project funds. And you can see how your general fund is trending here, pretty flat, to be honest, seventeen point five million in twenty nineteen, small decrease in twenty twenty, going down to seventeen point three million dollars, while your other governmental funds, again, was pretty flat as well, from eight point six million in twenty nineteen down to eight point three million in twenty twenty. Next slide is looking at your general fund revenues and expenditures, and that you continue to see that upward trend in your revenues and expenditures. This year, your expenditures were slightly more than your revenues, which was kind of expected with the pandemic and what have you. Went from seventy seven point nine, I'm sorry, sixty eight point nine million revenues last year to seventy six point five million in revenues in twenty twenty, while your expenditures went from sixty seven point six million in twenty nineteen up to seventy seven point nine million in twenty twenty. As Lanita alluded to earlier, the district didn't have any findings, and so that's, that's pretty, pretty significant, considering, you know, a lot of my other clients, you know, they, you know, they struggled a little bit with the pandemic and with the year-end closeout procedures, and we had to kind of come in and make significant adjustments. But for you all, we didn't have any adjustments that were deemed to be significant or material enough to warrant a finding. So hats off for everyone working very hard to, to make sure So hats off for everyone working very hard to make sure the trial balances were provided in good shape for us to do the audit. And we do have a management recommendation, a management point. And again, like most governments, everyone struggled with, at the start of the pandemic, with everyone working remotely, and then also with the turnover at the district, with the finance director leaving, the former finance director leaving back in December of 2019. And so your new finance director didn't come on until several months after that. And so with the learning curve and with the, you know, some things being kind of behind, it did take the district a little while to get ready for us, and so we really didn't get the audit started until November. So that kind of put us behind a little bit. Now, however, you know, with the pandemic, the state recognized that, you know, governments were struggling with working remotely and everything that came with, you know, with the pandemic, and so they did an automatic extension for local government school districts. So basically, your June 30, 2020 audit wasn't due until March 31, 2021. And so, again, that was an automatic extension that the Department of Audit's done for the governments here in Georgia. I don't foresee any major issues in fiscal year 2021. Again, with your new finance director being on board at that time for a little bit over a year, and so we do think things will be much better going forward. A few new standards, just want to kind of point out on the ones that you need to be made aware of. GASP statement number 84 deals with fiduciary activities, and this is going to be applicable for you all for June 30, 2021. And again, it focuses on whether a government is controlling the assets of a fiduciary activity or the beneficiaries with whom a fiduciary relationship is this. And so currently, you all have an agency fund that reports all of your school activity. And so for fiscal year 2021, you're no longer going to be able to show that as an agency fund. You're going to have to kind of show it as a special revenue fund. So you'd have to show your revenues and expenditures along with what you're showing, you know, normally assets and liabilities and things of that nature with the balance sheet. And so that will be a change for fiscal year 2021. And with the implementation of this standard, there will be a restatement of beginning fund balance to actually show this activity now as a special revenue fund. And so we'll work with the finance department to assure that, you know, the district implements that standard accordingly. The next one I want to point out is GASP statement number 87 that deals with leases. And again, this is going to be applicable for you all for fiscal year 2022, and we are encouraging all of our clients to start now, you know, evaluating all of your lease agreements and arrangements and to ensure that you're going to be able to implement this standard when it becomes applicable. So it's going to result in a lot of your operating leases now recording a liability along with the asset when this standard is implemented. And the last GASP standard I want to mention deals with GASP statement number 96, subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is applicable for June 30, 2023. And this is kind of huge for a lot of school districts that within their referendum, it talks about, you know, using the SPOS proceeds for, you know, capital outlay projects and things of that nature that has been approved. And some of your larger school districts have had very large dollar amounts of subscription-based information technology arrangements, cloud-based software, things of that nature that they could not use SPOS proceeds for because, you know, you couldn't capitalize it as an asset, and so you couldn't classify it as a capital outlay. But with this standard, it now allows you to capitalize on these arrangements. And so with that being said, you should, you know, be able to use SPOS proceeds to cover these types of arrangements. And so I know with Fulton County Board of Education, this was huge for them. They're one of my clients, and so they're happy that this standard finally came out. And so they have guided some of that along with the state representation of allowing that to be an allowable expenditure for SPOS proceeds to be used for. The last thing I want to mention, we continue to offer free continuing education classes for our clients four times a year. You know, since the pandemic, these classes have been offered virtually, and I think it's been a huge hit with our clients, and we've seen an increase in participation. Normally, when we were face-to-face, we, you know, had about 100 participants at each location that we held these classes. And so now, since it's been virtually, we've been seeing an increase in the number of participants. And so we try to keep our clients abreast of, you know, new standards that are coming out, and it's a refresher on internal controls over revenues, cash disbursement, things of that nature. And so, again, if you want to interview your staff to receive CPE training on various topics, just let us know, and we'll get them added to the list to invite them to future CPE classes. All right, so that concludes my presentation. Again, it was a pleasure and honor to be able to provide auditing services to the Kator City school systems, and I look forward to next year. Any questions I can address at this point?
That's a question.
Hi, Doug. This is Shayna Johnson-Davis. What is your process for follow-up? You made a recommendation in the previous year. What is that process the following year?
So, you know, if it's a finding, of course, it depends on what it relates to. So let's say if it was a finding on your, one of your federal war programs, where we are testing your internal controls, we're testing compliance requirements and things of that nature. So we're required to kind of follow up with that, see if it's been addressed in the following year. And we actually have that kind of discussed within that single audit report section. If it's a management point, it depends on the nature of the management point. If it's something that we've communicated with you all and it's something that has been kind of accepted, we may not repeat that again unless we brought that to your attention. So it just kind of depends on the nature of it. And so like, for instance, this management point that we recommended for 2020 going forward, you know, we come out to do the audit, and so, you know, it kind of will fix itself in terms of, I mean, it become evident, for instance, if we come in and we're making adjustments and the audit gets delayed again, then that will be either another management point that's repeated, or if it's significant enough, it may be elevated to be a finding. So it kind of depends. But we do follow up on those issues that we've cited in the previous year just to make sure everything has been addressed.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This is James Herndon. Your calculation of 2020 government funds that you audited, does that include all of the change? I mean, we were whipsawed around with like CARES Act funding and then state austerity cuts and then state returns, and he kind of ran through that as I was running, writing that down. Does that include all of that changes? Because that was as of when?
So the audit was as of June 30, 2020. As far as the CARES funding, I think that's not going to be reflected until your fiscal year 2021 schedule of expenditures of federal warrants. And so that'll be picked up during that time, and more likely, that'll be your, the major program that we have to audit. Maybe another program that we have to do as well, but it just depends on the dollar amount.
Okay. Next year's audit will be a little more inclusive of that stuff. Gotcha.
Correct.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Question, Heather? All right, thank you again, Doug, for that good news, and I'm glad to see that we had an audit with, you know, findings. Very happy to do that. And now we are going to move with our tentative budget.
Okay. Good evening again, everyone. I'm going to just do a quick introduction slide, and then I'm going to tag Lanita to finish the presentation, and then we'll end with board discussion of the proposed budget. Before we go through, Lanita and I took a lot of time just making sure we reviewed everything. This is my first time presenting a district budget. I wanted to make sure I had full understanding of all the intricacies and ins and outs. And one of the things that Lanita and I talked a lot about was how the district can be fiscally responsible. So budgeting for the long-term benefit of the district, maintaining a strong bond rating, making sure that we are transparently to build public trust and stakeholder trust. And some of the ways that Lanita and I talked about making sure that that happens and making the recommendations to board, that the budget would maintain a minimum fund balance of 4%, ideally, we should be able to cover one month. And that was one of the things that we shared, and as you look at the budget options, also to make sure that there is an efficient mileage rate, basically making sure that we are spending money effectively and efficiently to keep that mileage rate as low as possible. So as a district, we feel like that's one of our assurances. And then also to make sure that our budget is reflective of our priorities. Typically, you'll see in a district that 80% of budget should be spent on personnel, and ours is above that, which is great. And then all other funds are allocated towards programming departments based on needs that are identified in our strategic plan. And I feel like we were able to really come up with several options for the budget that Lanita's going to present to you that will help you make some decisions on how we will enact those spending practices for next year. Lanita, you ready?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Herman Freeman, community, and colleagues. Today, I present to you the proposed tentative fiscal year 2022 budget. Today makes the seventh budget discussion on the fiscal year 2022 budget. The board is scheduled to approve a tentative fiscal year budget this evening. The final approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget and tentative approval of the property tax mileage rate is scheduled for May 11 at the regular scheduled board meeting. The first and second mileage hearing is scheduled for June 8 at 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. The third public mileage hearing is scheduled for July 13 at 8:00 a.m. And the final adoption of the property tax mileage rate is scheduled for July 13 at the regular scheduled board meeting. This presentation will be posted on the district's website, and we continue to encourage all stakeholders to go to the website and provide us with your budget suggestions and comments. So first, we will look at the special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are lottery funds received from the state and federal government. Special funds are restricted in that they can only be used for the purpose they were received for. For example, pre-K lottery can only be used for the pre-K program. The district is required to spend the funds first and submit appropriate documentation for reimbursements. Special revenue funds budget is based off of the current year's budget or preliminary projections from the grant term. This year's special revenue budget consists of funds received from the state for the pre-K lottery, funds received from the federal government for title and special education grants, and JROTC and career technical and educational programs. The total special revenue budget for fiscal year 2022 is $2.7 million. Next, we have capital funds. Capital funds are received from a special purpose local option sales tax referred to as SPOS. This is a one penny sales tax that we receive from sales tax in DeKalb County. Capital funds are used to build and maintain district buildings and purchase furniture, buses, technology, and other equipment, and other equipment as well as payoff debt. Because funds received from SPOS are restricted to building and maintaining capital assets, salaries cannot be paid using this funding source. The active panelists referenced earlier were paid for out of SPOS, not general fund. We average approximately $417,000 per month in SPOS funds. We intend to utilize SPOS funds to pay our debt for bond certificate and on budgeted expenditures based on approved projects specified in the referendum. For the capital funds budget, we anticipate receiving $5 million for fiscal year, SPOS funds for fiscal year 2022. We are anticipating an ending fund balance of $11.6 million, which gives us a balance of $16.6 million that will be used for capital improvement purchases throughout the district. Next, we have school nutrition funds. School nutrition receives majority of the revenue from sales and reimbursement from the federal and state government, as listed on the next slide. Next, we have school nutrition expenditures. The largest expenses for the school nutrition program is the purchase of food. The second largest expense is personnel. The total budget for school nutrition for fiscal year 22 is $2.7 million, which balances out with the fiscal year 2022 anticipated revenue of $2.7 million. Next, we have general fund. General fund is the largest source of revenue for the district. It has very limited restrictions. General fund is the district's main operating account. On the next slide, we have the general fund fund balance history. This slide shows the fund balance history from 2011 to present. As you can see, the projected fund balance has traditionally been a lot lower than the actual fund balance. This means our past projections of how much funds we anticipated to have and reserve have been extremely conservative. Fiscal year 2021 projection was not as conservative and is within range of where we expect to end this fiscal year. In fiscal year 2020, you see that we ended the year with a fund balance of approximately $16.6 million. This was the beginning fund balance for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Next, this slide is a summary of how the current year fund balance was projected. As shown on the last slide, the end of fund balance for fiscal year 20 was $16.6 million. This is now our beginning fund balance from the current year, fiscal year 2021. In addition to carryover of $16.6 million from last year, as of March, we have $5.4 million in our current fund balance. And this is the difference between budgeted revenues and budgeted expenditures. So this gives us a total fund balance of $22 million. We anticipate on receiving $17 million more of revenue this fiscal year, and that's majority from property tax and QBE revenue. So this gives us a total of approximately $39 million in revenue. We anticipate that $31 million will be spent in remaining expenditures, with the largest expense being salaries and benefits, which are accrued in June for July, August payroll. And this means for July, August payroll, we book that money to June, so it will show up in this fiscal year. So this leaves us with a end of fund balance for this fiscal year of approximately $7.7 million. And this year's projected end of fund balance of $7.7 is the projected beginning fund balance for next fiscal year, fiscal year 22. The next slide shows fund balance as a percentage. As Dr. Herman referenced, the fund balance percentage specified in the board policy is within 4% to 15%. We are anticipating ending the current year with a fund balance of 9%. The next slide is a visual of the fund balance history. The red line represents the minimum 4% fund balance. And as you can see, the fund balance has drastically decreased for the current fiscal year. The austerity cuts from the state and the unexpected expenses related to the pandemic have had a negative financial impact on the district. So the fiscal year 2022 budget was developed with the following revenue assumptions. Austerity reductions will be partially restored. Property tax revenue projections are based on Georgia State University forecast. Fiscal year 22 property tax revenue takes into consideration the impact of the homestead exemption, and the mileage rate may increase at a maximum from 20.25 to 21. Next, you have fiscal year 2022 general fund budget updates. Updates to the fiscal year 2022 budget includes possible step increase for all employees. No cost of living increase is factored into fiscal year 22 budget. Step increase is the largest increase to the fiscal year 22 budget at 1.3 million. The second largest impact is the increase to TRS at 348,000. Other increases include the addition of a teacher, accounting specialist, nurses' aid, which will be split funded with CARES funds, upgrades and staff support and finance, and increase in two district reading coaches' positions from 190 to 210 days. To offset some of the costs, operational budgets were cut 5%. The total fiscal impact of the budget updates is 1.6 million. Other ways the district has offset costs to the fiscal year 2022 expenses include utilizing CARES funds to cover expenses that would have generally been expensed against the general fund. We have been allotted approximately 4.7 in CARES fund, 4.7 million in CARES funds. And this slide breaks down how the funds are earmarked. Over 3.3 million of the CARES funds will be used for salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits for EIP teachers, Decatur Virtual Academy staff, intervention manager, and salaries related to summer school and intervention programs will be paid out of the CARES budget. The remaining CARES budget has been used for COVID-related expenses such as personal protection equipment and repairs and maintenance to make sure our facilities were safe for staff and students. Additional funds are allocated to supplies for the Decatur Virtual Academy and intervention programs like summer schools. CARES is not an ongoing funding source, so all positions that are paid out of CARES for fiscal year 2022 will be moved back to the general fund for fiscal year 2023. Okay? The next slide shows the mileage rate history since 2005. The mileage rate has traditionally stayed stable in intervals of three years. In the last 17 years, the mileage rate has been as high as 20.9 and as low as 18.66. For the next five slides, we will look at five options for the board to consider for the general fund budget. This slide represents option one, in which the general fund mileage rate will remain the same at 20.25. The general fund budget on the left includes a step increase for all employees. The general fund budget on the right does not include a step increase. Again, cost of living increases are not proposed for any of the budgets. The only difference in these two budgets is that the budget on the left includes a step increase and the budget on the right does not. The mileage rate determines at what percentage property will be taxed by the school district. Highlighted in green is the projected revenue if the mileage rate remains at 20.25. As you can see, under major expenditure categories, salaries and benefits make up over 80% of the budget. The salaries and benefits on the left side include a step increase and is approximately 1.3 million more than the salaries and benefits on the right. The board policy specifies a minimum fund balance percentage of 4%. If you look at the yellow highlighted line, you see that with a step increase, the fund balance is 1.9%. And without a step increase, the fund balance is 3.6%. This slide is option one. This slide represents option two, in which the general fund mileage rate would increase from 20.25 to 20.40. The budget on the left includes a step increase for all employees, and the budget on the right does not include a step increase. As you can see, highlighted in green, the projected revenue from taxes has increased due to the increase in the mileage rate to 20.40. Highlighted in yellow, you see that the fund balance has also increased. However, the fund balance for the budget on the left, which includes a step increase, is only 2.3%, which is below the 4% minimum fund balance. The budget on the right, which does not include a step increase, is now at the 4% range with a mileage rate of 20.40. But again, that would mean no step increase for employees. The next slide represents option three, in which the general fund mileage rate would increase from 20.25 to 20.8. The green highlighted line represents the new projected tax revenue at a mileage rate of 20.80. Again, the only difference in the two budgets is that the one on the left includes a step increase and the one on the right does not include a step increase. The yellow highlighted line shows that with a step increase, the fund balance is 3.4%. And without a step increase, the fund balance is 5.1%. This slide represents option four, in which the general fund mileage rate would increase from 20.25 to 20.90. The green highlighted line represents the new projected tax revenue at a mileage rate of 20.90. The yellow highlighted line shows that with a step increase, the fund balance is 3.7%. And without a step increase, the fund balance is 5.4%. So, in order to give a step increase, option five, please, the next option? So, in order to give a step increase and have a fund balance of 4%, the mileage rate would need to increase from 20.25 to 21. The green highlighted line shows the increased revenue based on the increased mileage rate of 21. The yellow highlighted line shows that increasing the mileage rate to 21 will result in a fund balance of 4% for the budget on the left, which includes a step increase. The fund balance for the budget on the right, that does not include a step increase, is 5.7%. Next slide. We have looked at the impact five different mileage rates will have on the district's fund balance. This slide looks at the impact the five different mileage rates will have on the taxpayers. So the numbers highlighted in yellow are the proposed mileage rate. The market value of the sample property is 600,000. The assessed value for school district tax purposes is 300,000, or 50% of the market value. If the mileage rate remains at 20.25, the tax amount paid will be the same, as highlighted in green. The only increases or decreases would be due to higher assessment values of property or any exemptions that the property owner qualifies for. If we increase the mileage rate to 20.4 for a property with a market value of 600,000, the taxes will increase annually by $45, as highlighted in blue. If we increase the mileage rate to 20.8, the taxes will increase annually by $165. If we increase the mileage rate to 20.9, the taxes will increase annually by 195. And if we increase the mileage rate to 21, the taxes will increase annually by 225. This concludes the fiscal year 2022 tentative budget presentation.
Thank you, Lanita. That was great. You definitely can tell all of the hard work that you all put into that. I mean, honestly, that was, that's exactly what we needed to see, so we could have a discussion and a really robust discussion and be able to make an informed decision. So, thank you again, Lanita and Maggie, and everyone who worked on it. Thank you so much. So, I guess we can kind of start with questions maybe for Lanita, and then we can go into, you know, how are we feeling about the options? That sounds good for everybody? All right?
I just wanted to clarify, this is Dana. I know teachers are included in step increases. Does that include nutrition, UCLC transportation, all of those categories?
Yes, all employees.
Lanita, I'd love to hear you define this, because it's a question I get a lot. Define what a step increase is for people out there. And if that's putting you on the spot, I apologize, but it's kind of Greek to a lot of people, particularly taxpayers or whatever, because I may go back tonight and I may get the answer, be like, for only $165 a year for your taxes, your teachers go up a step level. Do you have a concept, a quick way that you explain that or you think about that?
As far as, I'm sorry, what's the question?
A step means that they go up a bracket on their salary scale, correct?
Correct.
So what we're talking about when we're talking about a step increase means that all of the teachers in the system would move, we're talking about funding, so that they move forward one level on the teacher's salary scale. Is that correct?
That's correct. You explained it very well.
They should pay me to do something like that. And so, all you got to do to really get to what we're talking about is, it's on the website that you were talking about that we were hyping up, correct? And go there and say, teacher's salary scale, if I have this degree and I'm working year 10, am I correct that what we're talking about is funding it so that if the teacher's next year is their 11th year, they will in fact be paid for year 11?
Correct. That is correct.
I'm just making sure. I want to clarify, and I know that, but I just got you.
I'm sorry, Lanita. I wonder if you could remind us what the assumed property tax revenue rate is right now? I know that we have that study by Georgia State that we are following, but when do we get to know the final number for what it, does the actual match the, what we are assuming?
Right. We usually receive the tax digests in May.
Okay. Do we have any feeling on whether we are going to come in at the exact Georgia State estimate, or if we're trending ahead or behind?
At this point, I don't know. I would think that we would come in a little higher, only because, as you know, the real estate market is booming, so the assessed values will probably be higher. And when this study was conducted, it was, you know, the market was not booming as it is now.
Right. And we know it can sometimes lag until we see it, like, it doesn't directly translate into higher property tax revenue, but it should trend that way. So, I guess the reason why I'm asking that is because I think, you know, we're going to have this discussion tonight and adopt a tentative mileage, but we're not going to approve it until May. And so, if there's any way we could get that number, it could impact, you know, it could impact this decision a little bit, since we're really close to our, you know, that 4% target bottom of our fund balance. I just feel like that number could be significant enough to, you know, impact our, a little bit our decision, or at least help us make some adjustment in May if we need to.
And that's a very good point. And be mindful that the final adoption of the tentative, of the property tax mileage rate is not until July. So we have a little time there if we need to go back and change it.
Okay. Yeah, so I think, you know, maybe if you could check on just the status on how we're trending, and if we could get some sort of an update for sure by the May meeting, that would be extremely helpful.
Yes, the county goes out and assess the value, and then they prepare the tax digests and submit it to us for review.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have a couple of questions. I wanted to start by thanking you. I continue to just really appreciate your presentations. I think you do a great job with these budgets, and you do a great job explaining what's going on here, both for us and for the public at large. And so I just, I continue to really appreciate.
Thank you.
And that goes, and I guess I'd also like to just say that, you know, the financial management of this district is strong, and it's always been strong. And we just got a clean audit, and I want people to recognize that, that it's been a clean audit, and it's been a clean audit for some time. And, you know, the money that we spend in this district is going to teaching kids. It's not going to central office staff. We have a very lean central office staff. And the people that we have in central office work hard. I appreciated the presentation earlier, because we can see just how much our people, our team is doing to keep this district going. There's a lot that needs to be done.
Yes.
In fact, one of the common complaints that we get is that you don't have enough people at central office doing the thing that I want them to do. Why aren't they addressing my concern today? And the reason is that we have a very lean team, and that's not where the money's going. You know, our fund balance declined significantly in this past year. And as you said, why did it happen? Well, this is no mystery. We lost several million dollars from the state. Our expenses increased by several million dollars. You do that, and pretty much your fund balance is going to go down, and that's what explains the drop. I did want to mention that one of the efforts that's been ongoing ever since I've been on the board is to improve our forecasting of the budget. And so, for the longest time, we've had very conservative budget projections that, and as you can see from your chart, would result in an ending fund balance substantially larger than had been anticipated. This is something that the board as a whole has been working to address for some time, because we didn't think that was smart budgeting. We want our projections not to be. What would happen is that we'd get these dire projections, and we would all sort of panic. But then we'd get inured to it, and we'd say, well, in the past, these dire projections have never been correct. The budget comes in much higher than we thought. And so, we sort of operated as if we had this reserve tank that we really didn't know what it was. And so, what we've been trying to do is tighten the projections, so the projections are more realistic, and that they're more like the actual ending year expenditure. I think it's great that in this year, we actually projected the ending year fund balance pretty much to a T. And I think that's another, a strong financial management, and I appreciate that. The, on a step increase, the way that I've sort of thought about it, James, has been that, it's always seemed funny to me that every year, the budget comes to us and we ask ourselves if we're going to get a step increase. And it has always seemed to me that this is a default. This is what's going to happen. We would have to take that away. Keeping the step increase, what we're doing is saying that we're going to continue to pay teachers and staff on a salary scale that they signed up for and that we committed to do when we hired. Now, it's not a commitment, right? Because we make these decisions each year, but it's kind of a commitment.
Right.
You get into this career to teach, there's an understanding that your salary is going to progress with your experience, and I kind of think that we have an obligation to a district, you know, to continue that, right? I mean, that's what people sign up for, and that's how you keep your staff happy, and pay them what they deserve. Or maybe not what they deserve, but at least what they're proud of. So in my opinion, I think that we should consider the step increase a default in every budget we ever do. As to the fund balance, I have a question. We have a 4%, our policies, our board policies require the fund balance to be between 4% and 15%. The 4% is the minimum. In order to change it, we would need to go amend our policies, which we can do. But I think that the 4% minimum fund balance might actually be beyond policy. I think there might be a state requirement that requires school districts to maintain a 4% fund balance. And you're just breaking ahead yet. And so I think that we should also, kind of like the step increase, that we just need to assume that we're going to have a 4% increase because it's required, but also because it's financially responsible. The final is actually a question, which is, only thing that concerns me in the entire presentation, we discussed this to some extent, is the CARES funds allocation. And the scary part, and, you know, is when I look down at the table and I see 2.4 million dollars of a one-time fund spent on salaries and benefits. Now, we have had during COVID, quite a number of temporary positions that are going to fail. Now, we have had during COVID, uh, quite a number of temporary positions that are going to phase out. I don't know if two point four million dollars worth. And so I wanted to ask, number one, how much of that, this CARES fund, is this all future looking? Or was any of that CARES funds spent on our?
Oh, Lenita, is that all future?
Well, no, um, some of it was spent initially, the first, uh, CARES, three hundred and twenty-one thousand was spent mainly on protective, um, personal equipment and getting the schools ready.
Okay. But the two point four million dollars in salaries and benefits, that's all for next year. So that's part of how we're sort of managing the, you know, the difficulty. Um, and that's fine. It's a one-time thing. You pointed out, uh, Lenita, that it it better be a one-time thing because the money's not coming back. Do we have a five-year budget projection? And typically in these presentations, we do look at that sort of, see what's going to happen, not just this year, but next year when we don't have CARES. And what, you know, how this, uh, if if we go up to twenty-one in terms of the millage, what's going to happen in the following year? That's my question.
Yes, I can get that information to you, uh.
Happened in previous sessions, yeah. So it made, it just didn't make it in this presentation, but we've been working on that. So maybe it just needs to be updated. Now that we know, for example, you know, the next two years, at least we know now for the senior tax exemption, what that's going to look like as long as it gets approved by our voters. Um, so that was a big unknown that we now know the next, it was two more years that we've gone.
And I I guess I also appreciated your pointing out that the active screens that were discussed in the comment period, that those were paid for out of SLOST funds that are restricted funds that couldn't be used to offset any of these operational expenses. And so, you know, that's that's really not an issue. And I think that you did point out that we have a five percent reduction in operating expenses. So we are trying as hard as we can, you know, to 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 be good, to be right to the taxpayers. At the same time, we're right to the kids and at the same time, we're right to the students.
As we do the, I stressed that his presentation, Doug, about the ability to use SLOST on some, um, about some of the technology stuff, have we looked into that? Because that is fascinating, um, as they expand. Because he said that they clarified that some of the SLOST money was now available for more technology stuff, um, as we look forward. That does open up a lot and it makes sense. I mean, you read the news, how do we define infrastructure certainly expanding? I think that's what that is. Um, the reason I looked over at Essence, because last month we did get a big presentation that we have some communication issues, some tax and stuff. So I'd be interested in including that in a five-year proposal as well.
Before we get too far away from it, I just want to clarify what I think Louis meant about what our teachers deserve. Not meaning that they don't deserve that, but they actually deserve more. So.
That's what I meant.
I knew that's what you meant and and we always feel that way. And I I also want to share for anyone who doesn't remember, but last year we did approve a step and we did approve a COLA. And we also paid the difference between what the governor promised and what ended up happening because of the COVID revised budget and the budget cut. And so as a district, despite being handed a hefty cut in state funding last June, it didn't happen until June because remember their session was suspended, things were tentative, then it got approved in June, when we had already adopted pretty much our budget. We hadn't had the three miller rate hearings yet, but we had approved our budget. And we had promised our teachers step and we had promised our teachers COLA and we had promised them that that bonus.
Yes.
And we knew then that we were making a decision that in the midst of a pandemic where we were being standard of state budget because we valued our teachers and we stuck with our promise, knowing it would cost us. But we knew that we had a a very comfortable reserve fund at the time. We were planning for it. And we made that very conscious decision. And so that happened this past year when that didn't happen at a lot of school districts. They weren't able to do that or and or just didn't have the money or couldn't do it, um, or didn't take the chance. And we did. And I believe it was a good investment. And so our teachers did get that for this past year, which I'm very proud of. Um, and so I think as a board, we have always valued and have worked very hard the past few years to try to make our our salaries and such more competitive. We realize, um, that we want to recruit and retain high-quality teachers. Um, and then we also, last, um, June, we also made major adjustments to some of our lowest-paid workers, pay pay scales. Um, and that was significant for for allowing our employees to make what, you know, we we want everyone to have a little wage. And so we we also invested in our employees in that way. So, um, it is, it is important to us and I I do support the step. Um, I I always wish we could do more. So we we have to balance our fiscal responsibility, our difficult budget situation, a lot of unknowns, but I do, I do support that.
Also, when, um, Louis, you were talking about the, I forgot about that two thousand dollar bonus to to make up that gap. But we also employed and paid all of our staff, even if they could not report to work and we had to close the building. Other districts did not do that. So we were committed to keeping our employees getting a paycheck, not just their paycheck, but paying their benefits.
I think, uh, you know, I, um, not, our teachers have, not just our teachers, but our our bus drivers, our nutrition folks, I mean, they have held this ship together under some really, um, crazy circumstances. And, you know, they were labeled frontline workers during this pandemic when I'm sure that was not a a label or title that they ever considered in the pre-service teacher program or as you're training to work in the cafeteria. But they they stepped up to those roles. And so I think, um, you know, we owe them a step increase for what they have done and continue to do for our children and the district. And I like that Louis said, you know, we just assume that that's what we're going to do, um, because it's the right thing to do.
Agreed. And I I think, um, I really again appreciate the hard work that, um, Dr. Furman and Lenita put in this. Um, Heather and I met with them last Friday and, you know, they were, we were looking at some of the options and, um, the step increase at that, or the, uh, sorry, the miller's rate increase at that time was twenty-two something. You know, and that made, you know, that made us both gas. Um, and we said, there's just, there's just got to be a way that we can find this balance of being able to to give a step increase, but also not, you know, hit, um, hit our miller's rate two points. And so I know that they spent almost the whole weekend just combing through everything. Um, I spoke to Maggie a couple of times over the weekend on the budget. Um, so, and I and I share that just to say that the board has concerns and wants to make sure that our staff and teachers and children are taken care of as well as knowing how that affects our community. And then when we relayed that concern to Dr. Furman and her staff, they heard us and then they took out the drawing board and rolled up their sleeves, figured out how we could do it and make it happen. And I love the five options because it really gives us a very clear understanding of, well, actually gives us a clear picture of, one, you were listening to what we were saying. You were listening to what the community is saying and that's evident. And two, it just kind of also laid out whatever option we make, whatever decision we make here are the options and this is what we need to stick to and this is what we, you know, what we agree to. Um, and Louis, your point was was spot on. I think if four percent is not just policy, but also Georgia, and then we also look at step increases being what we do, period.
Oh, let me just interrupt you just for a minute to say that the fifteen percent, as far as the fund balance shouldn't go over fifteen percent, is more law. But as far as the minimum, that's more of a district decision.
Oh, thank you so much for that. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, but, um, as I was saying, um, Dr. Furman and her team took the charge. And so from option five, a look that we can stay where we need to with the fund balance, we can offer the step increase without having to go to over twenty-two points in the miller's rate. And so I applaud you for the hard work that you all did and put in this in order to get us to this place. Because this is what we, what we wanted and hoped for. Um, so my vote would be option five. And so do we want to have any more discussion about the options? Or does everyone kind of want to give their feedback on what option they would like? And I don't think this is like an official vote, right?
Right.
This is just kind of a, we're talking about it.
Yep. Um, one, you, I just, this is a question for Lenita. Are there any other areas besides the tax revenue, property tax revenue, where we might either see some, yet where we might see some improvement? First of all, like, are we waiting for any, um, what are now tentative numbers to come in from state or other funding sources?
You're on mute.
Thank you. Other savings that come in from like vacant positions. So we'll know once we start closing the books where we will end up.
Okay. And is that something we might know by May or would we not know that till end of June?
We should know. We should have a, um, idea by May.
Okay.
I mean, it's less of a opinion on the options, but more of just a thought. Sort of like, I I hear a lot like we pay teachers less. And I do, I mean, pardon my wording, I do want to raise this and I hear you Heather, that like we've tried or whatever. But like, raising salaries and COLA stuff doesn't all have to happen in one year. And it's tough to have that conversation when you're raising taxes. And it is part of something that I'm very interested in is continuing to work on, you know, salary increases and looking at it and it's something Dr. Furman and I talked about when 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 I gave her a call, you know. It's a bad year to address it, but doesn't mean that we all collectively as five or anyone else isn't interested in looking at it down the road, um, is all I wanted to say, you know. Because because I he- I hear people are like, teachers don't make enough and they want to do COLA adjustments or, you know, their neighbors in other districts make more. I think there's a little bit of a pushback. We've talked about teachers and social security and some other things and that sort of stuff. But we are looking at it, you know, and we will continue to look at it. It's just parents and community, a lot of people have buckled their chin straps this past year. It's been tough. And so, um, I don't know that a tax increase makes us feel good either, any of us. And so it's that balance. It's really, really tough. Difficult.
Maybe I'll just add that going into the budget, you know, my actual number one priority, um, I mean, we've got multiple priorities. We've got staff, we've got students and we've got taxpayers. And to me, the number one was actually that we make sure to do right by the kids and that, um, there is, and I want to make clear that there is money in this budget for the needed remediation after a year of mostly virtual learning in which some kids thrive, but others didn't. And there's going to be a lot of remediation, summer programs and additional staff that they needed in the next year. And I just feel that no matter how painful it is, that's the number one funding priority, um, and we've covered it. And, um, once we've covered that, um, it's true that we're asking our staff, I mean, you know, again, the step increase is a fault. But we've also had a program over the past several years to try to make regular cost of living increases that of, I think the target's been two percent a year the past several years to try to catch up, to try to put our salary salary schedule where it needs to be. And what what what, you know, what's giving here is that we are in fact asking the staff to, uh, give up a cost of living increase. So we, you know, we're padding our, you know, we're we're going to give the COLA, the the step, which is default. We're not going to give the COLA. And so really the trade-off, as I see it, is that in this case, we're asking the staff to hold tight for a year because, you know, twenty-one, the miller's rate is high and we're increasing it. And, you know, but hopefully we'll return to the regular increases next year.
It's a balance, you know, because we we are balancing what we're, what we're paying our teachers and spending on our kids with what we're asking our community for and what's been a, you know, also a tough year for many. And, um, I I think that I I feel like we're striking a balance here. Um, and I do hope, you know, as we look at that five-year plan, that we will see, you know, we'll, I hope first of all, that we we get our full state funding back because it's only been restored at sixty percent. So, um, hopefully that will be fully restored, which will bring us, first of all, back to where we need to be to do the kinds of things we'd like to normally do. Um, and then hopefully also with this pandemic, we hope that it is getting under control and that our costs will continue to go down. And in that five-year plan, I know we have stepped back down, reducing costs for enrichment programs and we've allowed for normal, um, uh, you know, what do you call it, attrition of, that's not the word, but when teachers leave net without. Attrition, thank you. Normal attrition of the, what was increased staff to reduce class sizes to help with our enrichment, which is a, is a priority of this board, um, to really get our students back to live, you know, they need to be. So we do see improvements over the coming five years. Like I said, we're also going to be, um, having the revised revisions to the senior tax exemption. And so it'll be, I think, very helpful to look at that five-year plan to give the community some reassurance that this is not a trend. This has been a very, um, unprecedented year. That word is overused, but it's true. Um, so this is not, this is not indicative of a trend. And I also agree with Louis that we have, we and you and your staff, um, Dr. Furman, have done a tremendous job of of very carefully preparing the tentative budget.
So I know, so I think this is not a, um, an official vote, but anything standing right now, I'm, uh, would choose option five.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, is there any more discussion about the budget before we move forward? Alright, so next on our agenda is the district improvement plan.
Excuse me, are we going to vote on the tentative budget?
Oh, yes, yes, we are. Do we have a motion to vote on the tentative budget?
Move to approve the tentative budget.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Board chair votes aye. It's been approved.
Okay, I just want to clarify that we're approving option five.
Option five, correct.
Okay, thank you.
With the step increase.
Oh, right, option five with the step increase. Alright, and now we can move on to the district improvement plan.
So I am going to walk you through, um, some of the work that we've been doing. So in January, I presented to the board and the community, um, uh, kind of a springboard of where we're headed with our long-term five-year district improvement planning process and and kind of setting the aspirational goals that we put forth in that plan. And part of that plan was creating a coherent lens and that's what we've been working on, um, over the past couple of months. And the coherent lens is developed, designed to really help us create a nice through line from individual classrooms up through the district improvement plan so that it is one, so that we are one entity, all moving together to achieve our goals for equitable student outcomes. So what I'm going to do is kind of walk you through our equity lens and, or our, um, coherent lens. I'm hoping I can share this so I can also, I have a script that I, I hope I can share it the right way. Okay, great. Okay, so, um, on your screen, you should see a graphic and I am going to walk you through that graphic and just kind of, and there's also a recording of this that will come out to our staff and community members, um, on Friday in the district dispatch. Um, and that is part of the, just making sure our stakeholders are informed of what drives our decision-making as a district. Um, so, um, I'm going to go through that and if there's any questions or things you want to talk about, um, we can do that. Um, so this presentation is a follow-up to the video that we did or the presentation that we did in January. And I want to start off by saying that several years ago, our district, um, our equity department, with input from Equity Advisory Council and other key stakeholders, crafted CSD's beliefs and values regarding equity. And these foundational principles have guided our work since that time. Hence, as a district that is fully dedicated to paying the educational debt to our students of color, we intentionally use equity beliefs and values to guide our overall district strategic improvement plan. We believe that city schools of Decatur will have achieved educational equity when all students have the resources, opportunities and rigorous and relevant learning needed to enable their educational success. Also, we value, um, I'm sorry, plus the words? Uh, okay, so as we make decisions, CSD will ensure that the following values are upheld. High expectations for all students, a culture. expectations for all students, a culture that honors all students and staff regardless of cultural or racial backgrounds, a culture that is reflective and inclusive of all students and staff regardless of cultural or racial backgrounds, inclusive parent and family engagement, systematic use of data to determine and establish an equitable allocation of resources, intentional development and implementation of district policies and practices with a focus on amplifying equity. Also, that we will work together to eliminate inequitable patterns of academic achievement and disciplinary practices based on race, socioeconomic status, or gender. So having established all and using those core beliefs and values, we also need to establish a theory of action. And I mentioned this back in January, but want to bring it back to the conversation, that this keeps us focused on our results. Our theory of action establishes the conditions that we believe will ensure equitable outcomes. In City Schools of Decatur, we believe if we establish a balance of accountability and empowerment, where highly effective leadership at the school and district level ensure that our teachers deliver highly effective instruction, you will also, while also being supported in their own growth and development as professionals, then this will result in equitable outcomes academically and discipline-wise for all of our students. So with that being said, with clear articulated beliefs, values, a theory of action, we now have the essential component to build a robust framework to achieve equitable outcomes for our students. And we selected the outline of a schoolhouse to help us create a visual representation. The schoolhouse image also serves as a reminder of our relationship and partnership with City of Decatur as a city of homes, pools, and places of worship. The CSD framework for equitable outcomes starts with a foundation of stakeholder engagement and transparent communication. And we believe these are essential foundational components to ensure that we build and maintain trust with all stakeholder groups. On this strong foundation, we have identified three pillars that connect our foundation to the vision and mission for City Schools of Decatur. The three pillars are based on our N's policies that are outlined in our board policy manual. And we believe that we can accomplish our vision and mission, which is, in this framework, is represented by the roof of our schoolhouse structure, by using our theory of action to advance racial equity, accelerate student learning, build and sustain positive culture and climate. So that brings us to our coherent framework, or sometimes also referred to as a coherent lens. So finally, to ensure that we have a through line that links our beliefs, values, theory of action, and that we bring all these components together through a coherent framework, and also including our framework for equitable outcomes, that applies to each of our ten schools and includes measurable results for improvement. This is accomplished by using a framework for equitable outcomes to identify our strategic priorities and initiatives. With this framework built in our beliefs, values, and theory of action, we are able to ensure that our priorities and initiatives can take root and flourish. Our overall priority is to pay the educational debt to students from historically marginalized, marginalized racialized, marginalized racial groups. And we ensure this is a priority through consistent use of restorative practices, implementing district-wide positive behavior interventions and support, adopting and implementing a social-emotional learning curriculum, and through consistent and pervasive implementation of our CSD instructional framework in every classroom throughout our district. The next component of our coherent framework is to ensure that we have a district and school improvement plan that operationalize the action steps needed to meet our goals. The district plan will be used as the foundation for all local school improvement plans to ensure alignment in our work. This creates a clear through line all the way from our individual classrooms to our overall district goals. The district and local school improvement plans will all include SMART goals, regular collection and review of data to monitor progress, and clear action steps to be completed. Finally, underlying all of these components of our framework is an agreement from the district to be accountable for equitable outcomes through ethical governance, leadership, transparent communication, stakeholder engagement, and regular progress monitoring. So you may be asking what's next to make sure we have a successful launch of this very ambitious plan. And so our next step is we will be sharing through the district dispatch, a video communication that will walk our stakeholders through this. Our principals will be sharing the same video, or they have the script so they can walk through with their school staff, as well as their SLPs, more information so people have a better understanding of these foundational components. We're also gonna hold district-wide stakeholder feedback sessions to gather additional input and feedback. And I'm gonna be partnering with each of the department leaders in cabinet that shared all those great work, the great work that they're doing, to get input and gather feedback from our stakeholder group. After we gather that feedback, we will then implement, review, and revise our final district improvement plan with our, and share that with our schools and our community. And I hope that everyone will join us and engage in this work as we feel it is essential to hear the voices from various stakeholder groups, so that we can work together to make City Schools of Decatur a place where students can achieve their dreams and make the world a better place. So that is the update on where we are.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? That was great. Thank you so much, Maggie.
Good.
I'm Dr. Furman. My apologies. And I'm moving to our legislative update. Is that Courtney?
Um, I thought that was something with, we don't have a legislative update. We thought that was you guys.
Might be, it's from the previous.
Can you do that again? Oh, that might be from the previous agenda, potentially. Okay. I don't think we have any updates. I mean, we're still, one thing we are still waiting on is the governor to sign the both bills, I believe, that we've been working with DeKalb County, 292 and 293. And I believe we will be, I will be co-signing with the board chair for DeKalb County on SB 292. So I'm still waiting to hear from Brad on what the next steps will be with that. But I think those are the only two things that I've heard. Louis, have you heard anything?
Uh-oh.
Maybe we should say, there's probably not enough people listening, but just a shout-out, our immense gratitude to Brad Alexander for his pro bono assistance to the district over the past two years, which has just been invaluable. And, you know, Brad has just, really, really been helpful in navigating this really difficult situation. And he's doing it, like I said, because he's a parent and a resident, and he wants to help, and he's a resident. So thank you to Brad.
Yeah, thank you, Brad, definitely. And so we can discuss now the board newsletter. I believe we added this to the agenda just so that we could throw out any, I guess you can kind of give us the framework of what you and Shayna might already have put together, and then if there is anybody on the board that would like to add to what we would like the newsletter to have this time, and we can kind of discuss it and watch if we get in front of getting it out on time.
I think one of the key things is a more detailed Q and A on the budget, and creating more transparency to that. And we've got a lot of questions that have come in from the website, so I think taking some time to really explain that would be probably for me one of the key items to put on that, in that agenda, or in that newsletter.
I think that's a great idea, and sort of dispelling some misconceptions. And it seems like it would be worth spending a little, relatively large portion of this one.
Correct. I wouldn't mind seeing maybe an update on the summer remediation, just kind of continuing to tell the community what the plans are there. And then also the plan for the next school year, you know, five days, full days, and just kind of keep bringing that back. I think that that's probably something that needs to be in the next few of board newsletters, just if we do get that question.
I agree.
And perhaps we can add that, the summer remediation and the plan for next school year, and all of the, like, the school-level newsletters that are getting pushed out.
I don't know why SB 293 wasn't included. This has 292 on here. Where, oh, in the actual board packet?
It's in the newsletter.
Oh, in the newsletter. Hmm. Mom, that's a good question. I think we, we might not have been right to the point of decision yet when that last newsletter came out. And I do remember they asked that we-
Seems likely that it was in flux.
I think so. They wanted it to be a joint, like a joint, I know.
A joint announcement, and we, yeah. So I guess that we're gonna add that in there.
Yes.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I'll redo this more carefully tomorrow, because just after everything we've talked about at this meeting, there might be something that jumps out. So could we put it in, like we usually do, like in a Google Doc?
Mm-hmm.
That would be awesome.
Awesome. All right. So any more discussion on the board newsletter? All right. And future date, what do we have on dates?
Work session.
Mm-hmm.
On the calendar. Some of the things I wanted to try to do, really think about agenda studying, and then doing some free work after the agenda set for the board meeting at a work session. And then whatever discussions, can have some really nice, robust discussions in the work session, that then we can bring those items to action for vote at the actual board meeting.
Okay. I was wondering, because we were also planning to have the board retreat in May-
Correct.
The extended work session.
Extended work session?
Yes. Is it possible to fold the May fourth date into that?
We could probably do that, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I wanted to make sure that we dedicated enough time to whatever topic we have for that extended work session. And I know if there's a lot of stuff coming up in a work session, it might be too much. But what I can do is work with Shayna and see what selection was chosen for the extended work session. And then if it's something that we feel we can shore up in a shorter amount of time, then we can add the work session there. As Coonley said in public comment earlier about the college and career programs, the technical career programs, he's doing over at the high schools, putting together a presentation to give everyone a nice update on where we are with that and some of the district's future planning ideas.
So to be clear, so that I'm clear is what I mean. The extended work session, is that what we're talking about on May four?
No, that was-
Or that's May 21?
Is-
I don't know if we can confirm the date on that.
I don't think we confirmed the date for that. It is, we're looking at a couple Fridays.
But this was a different-
It was gonna be May four.
Oh, so.
Yeah. We can try, yes, let me look at it.
I'm also hoping for that.
Which one, sorry?
So instead of doing a separate work session on May four, and then the extended is just two, everything in the extended-
I've gotten used to seeing you guys a lot.
Right. Did I need you to take it in personal?
Didn't come up during budget. I thought we maybe were gonna touch on Decatur Virtual Academy, and I think at some point, you know, you may not be ready to give an update this evening, but I think at some point in the near future, an update on that will probably in this newsletter, but also out to the, the community, or families, as a part of what is next year's gonna look like.
Yeah.
Probably, good communication.
Okay. So this includes the public portion of our, public portion of our school board meeting. I want to thank, again, Dr. Furman for just stepping in. She's been there all the time, and we really appreciate you. And thank you also, Mr. Wilson, for being here with us. And we do have a reason to go back into exec session for personnel, and I don't expect that there will be any actions to be taken. Do I have a motion to go into exec session?
I make a motion to go into exec session.
All right. Thanks so much, guys. Good night.
We need to vote, so everybody agrees.
Everybody agree?
Aye.
All right, we're going into exec session. Thank you, everyone that stayed with us.